I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Nueva Camina?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. First item is items from the audience. I have a sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email council members of the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond, and as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meetings in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. And this is your only warning. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are nine people signed up to speak in person tonight, and one person signed up to speak remotely. And as a reminder, there are three minutes, and if your comments go longer, you are more than welcome to hand over your notes if you have them, or you can email council after the meeting. Thank you. I'll call about the first four people, and so you can know when you're coming up. I have Chester Anderson, then Connor Graham, then Max Ruhlman, then Wolf Adriatico. And Chester, I'm going to ask you a question. Can you see lights down there? Are they working by your microphone?
I don't see anything on the screen.
Let me see.
Is there supposed to be something?
Are they there? I haven't started. Okay, I'm going to start the timer, and if you don't see lights, let me know.
Mm-hmm.
We want to make sure the timer's working. Thank you. Oh, it's doing something right. Hang on. This is weird. It's going backwards. Well, that's new.
Do I start vogueing?
Just a moment. Oh, there we go. A button got pushed. That is very strange. Okay, all right, we're good. Please go ahead.
Hey, guys, it's me again, but you can't imagine why I'm here. It has been two months of doing this every two weeks as a chore. I am exhausted from having to do this every two weeks. My health is still not better, even though I have been trying to relieve myself of the stress associated with the firehouse. It's also negatively impacting all of my friends. But what I really wanted to focus on today was just, it's very strange to me, the way that the city is dealing with this. I mean, you've heard this a lot, but it's especially strange to me how the city keeps talking about the firehouse in the past tense and saying, oh, the firehouse was a place. You know, it's very strange to me. It's like a man goes missing, and suddenly everybody starts saying rest in peace about him. You know? Like, it's very strange, especially because the firehouse's Instagram is still being used, 14 services, even though it's not the firehouse being used. And I've noticed a pattern, too, with, you know, like, the public listening sessions at the senior center. Like, it feels like the city just keeps trying to steer us towards, you know, oh, what are we doing right? What do you like about this plan? Especially, you know, like, with the furniture that was resoundingly disagreed upon, and yet they still went through with it without even looking at it. It just, it feels a little insidious. I don't want to accuse anyone. I hate fighting, but like, it really does feel like there's something we're not being told. You know, us in the council both, you know? Like, most of the council doesn't even know what's happening, and anyone else below that level, neither do they. Just, we don't want to have to do this. We don't want to have to fight you guys. You know, we want to be on the same team as you guys, but it's just really hard when, you know, like, the city just keeps showing through these actions that they're not listening. And just, we want to believe that the city has our best interests in mind, but it just gets harder and harder. I mean, I talked about how I wholeheartedly supported the closure of the firehouse, but I was kind of given no choice because just how abundantly clear it was made that this choice makes no sense to be, at least to be done in this order, right? When the firehouse is still functioning, and it's not a five and falling apart. Just, in conclusion, I have been taught all my life to obey authority, accept loss when it is given to me. And if someone was, you know, being mean to me or trying to trick me, then they would be outwardly mean towards me and, you know, like, not try to pretend to act nice. But I would like to thank the city for showing me what it's like when someone is actively tricking you and doing it with a smile on their face and hiding it behind niceties. I am so tired. We want to be on the same team as the council. And again, I sincerely thank Steve Fields, Jeff Hagan, and Councilwoman Anderson. Your support means a lot to us. In conclusion, I look forward to the council possibly voting yes on a motion to at least temporarily reopen the firehouse. Thank you.
Next is Connor Graham, then Max Ruhlman, then Wolf Adriatico, then Sasha Glenn.
Okay, so I'm Connor, I'm 20, and I've been going to the firehouse for a while now. When I first heard that was closing, I was really upset about it because now I found this community. I could be how I am, dress how I was. And then when the first, sorry, I'm not good with my words, but when we went to the first show at the community center, where it was just this random college lecture hall, I genuinely did not feel comfortable dressing how I want to be. I told several people that I was genuinely scared and then dressed more conservatively than I'd, I, when I got to the actual thing, I stopped outside the doors and reconsidered even going inside. And this happened twice. First time, and I have not been to the council, any of the places ever again. I just did not ever feel comfortable. Another thing I am worried about is with the, if you guys do take down this building, that is a clear destruction of a piece of history, a piece of Redmond history. And seeing how the world is going right now with our United States government actively destroying history, I hate seeing it happen here. We should preserve a piece of history because without that, what is Redmond? What is, without all of this history? Right now, Redmond is starting to look like Bellevue. It's sad, it's corporate, there's nothing really to do for teens or anything. I used to come here a lot just to, because there's nothing to do in Bellevue. Now I don't know where to go. Thank you.
Next is Max Ruhlman, then Wolf Adriatico, then Sasha Glenn, then Aaron Hamilton.
Hello. I'm a member of the city, and all views expressed are my own. At the community listening session on May 28th, I deeply appreciated the council members that showed up and made some time to listen to the community. Thank you for that. I was disappointed at the absence of the mayor and the parks director. And as far as I'm aware, that was the last listening session planned for the teen engagement process until the fall. This also disappoints me, and I hope there's more engagement planned from the Parks Department. One thing I have learned about city council is that an idea isn't able to go forward unless another council member seconds it. I want to come here today to second some of Sasha Glenn's ideas from last meeting. The idea of a subcommittee is incredibly important in order to have two-way conversations in a transparent way. The call for an investigation into the parks director is also very important. The staffing issues in the Parks Department are real and have had a consistent and devastating impact on morale. On top of the disappearance of Jeff Hagan, Tori Watson has also left the city. We have some truly amazing staff in the city, from facilities to engagement, but we cannot let the system of bureaucracy get in the way of providing quality teen services and ultimately changing lives. The current state of teen services would be incredibly depressing if the decision-making behind it wasn't so infuriating. Our programs are bleeding out quickly, and most of not all of the enthusiasm for our music program is disappearing. Even the dedicated teen space in RCCMV is no longer dedicated. I learned today that summer camps will be using that space as well, and because of that, the staff will need to make arrangements to basically childproof the space in order to protect valuable equipment that we had from the OFH. I look forward to the report that we will all be getting in July from the Parks Department, and I really hope that the mayor is able to both explain the real issues with the building, give us a clear path forward, but also take accountability for the lapse in I think that's really important. The real mental and emotional effects of this closure are not going to go away, but this group of teens and community members is committed to seeing that future generations have a space to grow, learn, and belong. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Sasha Glenn, then Aaron Hamilton, then Forrest Craig. No, yeah, Craig. Krabs, Craig, not sure. Forrest, someone.
Hello. I understand that council does not make operational decisions, but I also know council may only decide based upon facts presented in official format. Facts presented in April study session by Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton and the mayor's office were misrepresented to form a false narrative. The Redmond Community Center at Merrimore Village is less suitable for summer conditions than the old firehouse, despite all the dangers and potential risks that were presented at that study session to the council. The city talks about how OFH had no central HVAC. RCCMV's central HVAC is not adequate and needs substantial repairs. The drop-in has no central HVAC, which is where we hang out all day. At OFH, the studio was fully air-conditioned to protect the sensitive gear. At RCCMV, there is no studio, but the drop-in is cooled with a taped-together spot cooler that is falling apart. The OFH, there were portable coolers. At SCCMV, that spot cooler I mentioned is gigantic and has a large tube that connects to the ceiling and is secured by, is secured by clamps and tape that is falling off right now. While the old firehouse had large garage doors being a fire station leading into the outer fenced area, RCCMV, first off, has no fenced area outside, so teens are not safe outside. The drop-in also only has one door which leads inside, and the doors there are automatic, so the, the doors in that facility stay closed, so the air circulation is terrible and it stays stuffy, which raises a major concern and, I believe, a genuine hazard that more than just me and more than just staff have mentioned that heat stroke is a legitimate possibility in Merrimore. And I don't know a lot about building safety codes and facility safety codes, but I would bet that Merrimore violates more than OFH does. I also, because of this lack of air conditioning, I'd say.
In conclusion?
In conclusion, we've spoken extensively on how unsafe RCCMV is inherently as a joint facility. It is also physically inherently unsafe. Thank you.
Next is Sasha Glenn, then Aaron Hamilton, then Forrest, it might be Krabs, it might be Craig, I'm sorry. You can tell me what your last name is. David Morton, and then Alex Zimmerman.
Good evening. So, at the last meeting, we talked a lot about ideas that would be helpful and progressive and working together. Forming a subcommittee seemed to be something that council members were in agreement with for the most part, but I haven't heard any action. Just lots of shaking their heads, smiling, saying we care, saying, yeah, we hear the community, and then nothing. So here we are again, just, I don't know, like a broken record. I'm hoping at some point, the city council and the mayor can start doing their job about this so that I don't have to come after being in court all day at hearings as an attorney. This is getting pretty exhausting to come here and try to tell you how to do your job after doing mine all day. So, that being said, I did send a follow-up email last week to several council members, and I got no response except for from Councilmember Fields. That's the only person that responded to my email following up to inquire of what is actually happening? What's the status for forming a subcommittee or having a stakeholders committee or community committee? Nothing is being said. No answers are being given. We're just being dragged back here every couple of weeks to go over it again and again. I'm guessing at this point that that's happening to hold off the community long enough for this report that Lorraine should have already had when she made the decision to close the OFH, that Lorraine is going to present in July or August, I'm not sure. What it all's starting to seem like to me, because we're trying to give the benefit of the doubt, work together, but then there's so many clues that point to something that looks like plausible deniability. I heard from council members that they weren't even aware of the plans to close OFH until just right before I learned about it. But our public records requests have revealed some responses that appear to be handwritten notes from the Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton as early as July 2024 discussing closing and moving OFH. So, the city at least had been thinking about it that time. The city also did not get surprised by the structural issues that led to this abrupt displacement of the community. The building's been there for, through over three decades. The issues with the materials it was built with have been known to the city for at least over a decade, probably more. It just doesn't seem like a good excuse to tear away an important asset from the community with no actual assessment or evidence done that shows a clear and present threat to the teens. The building is not condemned. That could be the only reason, I would think, that this type of abrupt displacement should occur, unless the city's plan is to make sure the building is vacant, move the services so technically they don't have to involve the public at all because they're not ending any services, and while that building is vacant, they can go ahead and make a deal to sell it to someone else. I don't know, but that's what it's looking like, and we're really hoping to hear something is actually happening to put together that subcommittee. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, council president?
I just wanted to remind the listening public the date for our study session to look at the assessment of the facility is July 22nd, and we will be looking at that and being hopefully presented with some options at that time around moving forward on the facility process, once we have that information. But July 22nd is the scheduled date at 7:00.
Thank you. Aaron Hamilton, Forrest, last name, can't quite read it, David Morton, and Alex Zimmerman.
It's going to be tough to follow up after that. Mine's going to be pretty darn boring this time. My pronouns are she and her, so we're not confused this time around. I've been noticing a growing issue with the Smamish River. I use it practically four or five days out of the week, all through spring and summer, doing paddle boarding, and I've been noticing a large amount of tennis balls coming from Merrimore. I collect probably an average of seven to 10 tennis balls on a two-hour paddleboard on those four to five days. And over a four-month period for the summer, I'm taking out about 600 to 800 tennis balls out of the river, and those are the only ones that I can get to. There's probably, there's dozens that are on the shore, stuck in foliage, stuck in trees that I can't even get to. And I was hoping that even the council or whichever department oversees it can do, or at least start like an environmental impact study of putting in collectors in the water to help stop from, stop these balls from overtaking the river. And also, I'm cutting about hundreds of feet of fishing line dangling from trees along the shore that I've seen fish get tangled up and die. Obviously, the fishing people are not throwing away their fishing line. I'm literally having to carry a knife and cutting them out of the trees and obviously cutting the other end for the dead animals to continue flowing down. But this is becoming a big issue with just the environmental impact of that off-leash park in Merrimore. Luckily, with these tennis balls that I collect, I'm donating them to the off-leash park in McRedmond Landing, I think. I'm just tossing them in there, and they seem to disappear, so I'm sure they're probably back in the river again. But also, as an olive branch to the law enforcement, you see a lot of things on the river, and I see a lot of heavy drug use, heroin, drug deals, bag drops for drugs, all, every time that I'm out there. Well, not every time, more prominent in the winter and fall months. So, there you go, something else for you guys to ignore and not do anything about. Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, correct?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to let you know that the Merrimore Dog Park is from King County, and I'm not certain whose jurisdiction the river actually is, like, we, the trail's King County, so.
Is the river considered King County or?
You know, as you were talking, I wasn't certain. So, I just, I want to let you know that probably a great place to start, if you wanted to send an email to King County Parks and talk about the dog situation with the balls, but let us look into figuring out whose jurisdiction is.
Yeah, I figured, I would let you guys know because your voice is
Sorry, that was.
much louder than mine with other city councils, and they listen to you people more than me.
I was going to say, if you send me
But I can do it, too.
If you send an email at mayor@redmond.gov, like, with this in it, then I can find the right people in King County that I can share with. Just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Next is Forrest, and he's going to tell me.
Is this your handle?
Oh, okay, I was, Forrest Craig is someone else, so, yeah, I was like, that's not correct. So, thank you. Forrest Crabtree, and then David Morton, and then Alex Zimmerman.
Hello, this is going to be really disjointed, and I'm very tired today, so that's just how it's going to be. I miss the firehouse today. If it didn't close, I'd be there right now. I had a nightmare last night that all of my homes and places I go turned into a weird amalgam of the, of the firehouse, and I was stuck in a perpetual late-night bus ride on the 225 with familiar strangers. When the firehouse was open, I rode the 250 often enough that the bus drivers recognized me, and I recognized some of the people there. I rode the 225 often enough that I recognized the kids just getting off of school and kind of knew what drama was happening in their circles week to week. Those buses were the only way I reclaimed my time after feeling stuck inside for so long. My friends have texted me saying, this bus reminds me of you, and that's how often I was on it. Even like, in the middle of the day, some people would, I would text people, and they'd be like, are you just bored on the bus? And it was often that. I rode those buses for the first time in three months today. I forgot which stop to get off at, which is insane because I didn't even need a map three months ago. I would just go, and I don't even know how I got here at this point, like, well, not here physically, but it was so integral that I would think about, okay, where I am right now, how could I get to the firehouse if I needed to? And I knew the bus route from everywhere I was consistently at, which some people would say is masochistic, but I love the buses. And I'm tired. I'm really exhausted from school and after-school stuff that I've found to replace what the firehouse was to me, even though nothing can. I'm really tired. The firehouse still lives on in everything I do. I'm going to be in a play, not to brag, but I'm going to be in a play with Seattle Shakespeare this next month, and I'm going to be wearing a firehouse pin. And I, people, I mentioned it to, at Seattle Shakespeare knew what I was talking about, and they all talk to me about it all the time. They ask me how it's going, and I have to give them the terrible news every time that there's nothing I can do. Our plea for our homes, our home back is more than a group of kids growing nostalgic. It's a desperate cry for our place and the people we love and safety. Thank you.
Next is David Morton, then Alex Zimmerman.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. Please adopt Resolution Number 1606. This resolution is crucial for implementing the Redmond 2050 Comp Plan, which establishes a Southeast Redmond Manufacturing and Industrial Center, or SEMIC. A key benefit outlined in the plan is the protection of Redmond's drinking water aquifer. The policies for the SEMIC support light industrial and manufacturing land uses that are appropriate for critical aquifer recharge areas or CARAs, thereby safeguarding Redmond's aquifer and drinking water. The plan restricts uses that jeopardizes the CARA. Your approval provides continued protection of Redmond's drinking water. On another subject, I want to commend Redmond's dedication to achieving community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050 and underscore the importance of community engagement strategies in making this vision a reality. Redmond already employs several such strategies. Firstly, encouraging neighborhood climate action teams through initiatives like the Redmond Climate Action Challenge empowers residents to foster local change and build community resilience. This grassroots approach leverages the power of collective action. Secondly, fostering climate educational programs in schools is crucial. The Lake Washington School District's efforts in sustainability education are commendable. They cultivate environmental stewardship in Redmond's youth and ensure future generation equipped with the knowledge and passion to tackle these challenges. Thirdly, establishing a climate innovation fund for solutions can catalyze local ingenuity. While the city may not have its own dedicated fund, Redmond's proximity and partnership with entities like Microsoft with their substantial climate innovation fund offers a unique advantage for fostering new local climate technologies and pilot projects right here in Redmond. Fourth, publishing comprehensive reports like Redmond's Environmental Sustainability Annual Reports ensures transparency and allows the community to track progress toward carbon neutrality. These efforts build trust and shared understanding. Finally, integrating climate justice initiatives is paramount. Equity and inclusion is a core theme in Redmond's community strategic plan, signifying a commitment to ensuring that all residents, especially those most vulnerable, benefit equitably from climate actions. By continuing to strengthen these community-focused strategies, Redmond can reach its carbon neutrality goals and foster a more engaged, equitable, and resilient community for everyone. Thank you.
Next is Alex Zimmerman, and then we have one remote testifier, remote commenter.
Long time I don't speak to you. Yeah, a pleasure to talk to you. Zihai, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo pig and bandito. My name is Alex Zimmerman, I lived here for 40 years. I support Trump from beginning. I have 5,000 day of, speak 5,000 times. I have 6,000 day of trespass, and Bellevue prosecute me five times. For pleasure. What did I want to speak today about? This, about these criminals? And I explained to you right now, they're very heavy criminals. They give me trespass, who give me trespass? Mayor, executive branch, from legislative branch. By U.S. Constitution, executive branch don't have power of legislative branch. So by definition, what has happened, Mayor, right now, she's a, make a constitutional crime. In civilized country, constitutional crime is a minimum 20 years in jail. This is exactly what's happened here. It's ordinary bandito who can do in everything. And I spoke everywhere, you know what it's mean? All same, all Democrat can do in everything while they want. Why I have 6,000 day of trespass in five time prosecute me? For what? A whole prosecution? It's a pure fraud, pure fabrication. Guys, I speak right now to everybody who not pure freaking idiot, because many years ago ago, I have this slogan, "Stop fascism with idiotic face." We have idiotic face now, we have a classic fascism. I give you statistic, what is absolutely shock. Couple weeks ago, come new statistic. For five year, for five year, we from number one come to number 10 statistically. What this mean? It's mean 10 floor down. When 10 floor down system fallen, you know what it's mean? It's not matter Nazi, communist, Democrat, Republican, fascist, no fascist. It's mean system collapse. That's it. This is exactly what this Democrat did for last 30 year. They bring us to collapse for 30 year. It's nothing forever, so not surprise me. So, right now, we one from low professional cities, King County, King County is number one fascist account in America, it's no question. But when you fallen from one to 10, it's very unusual. It's a collapse of system. So, right now, I speak to everybody who not freaking idiot. Stop Democrat mafia, stop Democrat bandito. That's very important to us, and very important to make us life better, because for another five year, we will fallen another 10 floor down. It's it. We have right now, no one point what is Democrat delivery for last 30 year. It's a positive, all negative. Viva Trump, viva new American revolution.
Next, we have, excuse me, comment has been distributed to the council from email. One person has signed up to speak remotely, and that is Joe Kunsler. Hello, Mr. Kunsler, you have three minutes to address the council.
Wow, that's a tough act to follow, man and mayor. Wow, gee, that, in fact, that act is so easy to follow, that's like putting one foot in front of the other. But I actually called to comment about how great Redmond is. I understand you need ideas to hand out for Derby Days. So, I want you to know, I called up Bellevue, and I told them that the Bellevue City Council should, you should grab autographed posters of the Redmond City Council to hang on your walls, especially the angel president. Is somebody talking?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Kunsler.
All right, there was a bit of an echo, you know, I'll write it off. But, you know, as I told Bellevue, you know, they're the second best because Redmond has President Kritzler, Redmond Link, Vice President Forsyth, Microsoft, and of course, Redmond TV. You should have Redmond TV have a booth at Derby Days, and I'll tell you why. Because a lot of people love watching Redmond Television. It's the best civic television in all of downtowns pod. You know, I mean, people wanna get on, wanna wear shirts saying, "Hey, I was on Redmond TV." I mean, it's really popular, and I really highly recommend it. Now, sadly, we gotta discuss this guy Zimmerman, and I want to be brief about it. I think he was kind of campaigning there, and I think the sooner we can get him a six month trespass, the better. I really didn't appreciate that Nazi salute at the beginning, I found that hateful, and I thought this president, this great president, this wonderful president, was extremely clear that Redmond was a hate-free zone, and never again means never again. I would think it's time that Mr. Zimmerman was told, "That's enough. I mean, this is America, and we don't, you're all hate at our neighbors, and we're supposed to respect our leaders and then admire our leaders." In conclusion, Redmond-style, I want to thank you for your leadership on so many issues, but especially defending the common, and I look forward to Derby Days where we can celebrate the world's best city council. And I can't wait for the autographed posters and action figures of the city council. Thank you.
Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'm going to read some things into the record. On consent item number seven, Resolution Number 1606, a resolution of the City of Redmond, Washington, authorizing countywide growth center applications to King County for a countywide growth center in Marymore Village and a countywide industrial center in Southeast Redmond. Consent item number eight, ordinance number 3217, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Chapter 3.10 of the Redmond Municipal Code to correct inadvertent deletions and make minor edits to improve clarity, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3218, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Chapter 3.38 of the Redmond Municipal Code to implement Redmond 2050, the periodic update of the comprehensive plan, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3219, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Chapter 7.04 of the Redmond Municipal Code to account for new zoning designations created as part of the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update, updating code references, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3220, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Title 21 of the Redmond Municipal Code, known as the Redmond Zoning Code, to implement Redmond 2050, the periodic update of the Redmond Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3221, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting the Downtown Redmond Center Plan, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Resolution Number 1607, a resolution of the City of Redmond, Washington, updating the affordable housing payment and lease schedule for the neighborhood residential zone pursuant of Chapter 21.20 of the Redmond Zoning Code and establishing an effective date. In consent item nine, ordinance number 3222, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Redmond Municipal Code or RMC sections 13 dot 04 dot 280, 13 dot 08 dot 015, 13 dot 08 dot 032, 13 dot 16 dot 010, 13 dot 16 dot 020, 13 dot 16 dot 040, 13 dot 16 dot 050, 13 dot 17 dot 020, 13 dot 17 dot 040, 13 dot 18 dot 040, 13 dot 18 dot 050, and 15 dot 24 dot 060, adding middle housing definition to water and sewer rates and stormwater changes, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Consent item number 10, ordinance number 3223, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending sections 13 dot 25 dot 045 to the Redmond Municipal Code imposing limits on temporary construction de-watering within the city's critical aquifer recharge areas, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. I think I got it all. This is a role, yes, council president?
Oh, geez, I didn't get my hand up earlier. I just wanted to make a quick comment on one of the items.
Of course.
I just wanted to note on the very last item on temporary construction de-watering, I'm very excited to vote for this, along with some of the other items on the agenda, in particular, implementing our Redmond 2050 vision into code, but in particular, excited about the work that we've done over many years around the issue of temporary construction de-watering and working to protect our aquifer here in Redmond, making sure that our residents have access to reliable drinking water and that we're protecting what we have is so important. So, I want to thank all the city staff who've worked on this for many, many years, and the community that's given input on that as well.
Great, thank you so much. This is a voice vote, because we're all here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And voices, and it carries six to zero, thank you. And I just also had some remarks about this, because it's pretty monumental. With the passage of the consent agenda, the city has taken a major step forward in implementing the vision of for Redmond, adopted last fall in the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update. After years of community collaboration and with a focus on equity and inclusion, sustainability, and resiliency, the city council has adopted updates to development regulations that will help build a city that works for everyone, both today and for generations to come. The council's action tonight simplifies the zoning code, updates use regulations, provides new opportunities for transit-oriented development, significantly updates design standards, adopts mandatory green building provisions, adopts universal design standards and incentives, adopts a new citywide incentive program, and updates affordable housing requirements and furthers middle housing implementation. Getting to this point took significant teamwork. I want to thank city staff for listening to our community and reflecting their vision in Redmond 2050 and these updated development regulations. This was led by our long-range planning team, I see some here and some online, but could not have been completed without extensive collaboration with staff from across the organization and every department. I also want to thank the Redmond Planning Commission for their many hours of study sessions, public hearings, and outside reading they did to ensure that community voices were represented in this process and that the resulting code amendments will move Redmond in the right direction. Thank you to city council for engaging in this work, especially in viewing it through the lens of the adopted plan, bringing forward community concerns, and carefully reviewing the planning commission's recommendations. And finally, I want to thank every community member that attended an event, engaged with city staff, contacted the planning commission or city council, completed a questionnaire, or otherwise shared their future vision for Redmond. It's because of you that we were able today to celebrate today's milestone, which is monumental and been working on it since 2020. So, congratulations, everyone. Congratulations to staff and everyone out there. Our next item of business...
Mayor Bernie?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
There's been a request from the audience, if you could speak a little more closely to your microphone.
Oh, thank you, I can, I will try to do that. Thank you so much. We have no hearings and no staff reports. Our next item of business is an ombud report. For May, we have Councilmember Slahudin, and for June, we have Councilmember Stewart. Who'd like to go first?
I can just say I don't have anything remaining from May.
All right, thank you, council member. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. The council received multiple questions about recycling services and the transition to recology news to share that we have so far about the recology stores that it will open in October, and there's a link on our website to just learn more overall about the transition as more folks have questions about that. Of course, we did get some questions about the teen center and teen programs. So, as was stated earlier, July 22nd is the next study session for the council, excuse me, on the teen center, and that is the structural engineering assessment, as well as a study session that's been scheduled for September 9th regarding teen services writ large, and that was the work that was funded in the budget to better understand what the needs are for teen programming throughout the city. Just to respond directly to the items from the audience, speaking for myself and not as the ombud of the council, but it is my expectation that once we have had the study session on the 22nd and understand what we're working with a little bit more, then we can, after that, begin to take next steps on what I think will probably be something like a stakeholder group that was used for the senior and community center. I would not want us to get that too far down the road before we actually know what we're working with after the study session on July 22nd. So, that's just my perspective on that, I don't speak for the whole council on that. Continuing on with my ombud reports, the council received a couple of film screening invitations regarding current events in China, and an event invitation to a night market hosted by the Indian-American Community Services. We received some questions about drone regulations, and this included a response related to the drone as a first responder program, as well as a reminder from our local team that if you do have an issue with a private drone in your neighborhood, do call for service, do call the police department, and they're, they would be happy to help with that as well. We received a couple of questions about utility rates, and I do know there are a few more in my inbox that I haven't quite gotten to. For the rest of my personal ombud report, I had a couple of visitors to my office hours, including representative from MAPS with an update about their redevelopment projects. I do not have office hours next week because I'm attending the Association of Washington Cities Conference. I received some feedback on our last council meeting and spoke with a youth advocate on green roofs, and received some feedback from pickleball players at the Redmond Senior and Community Center around litter in the area and the need for signage improvements around restroom access, especially on the weekends. I was asked to respond to a local business in downtown who had an issue inadvertently created in their parking lot as a result of a tenant improvement at a neighboring property, and the public work staff are now working with that business, and I appreciate the staff's work on that. And I received a couple more emails regarding noise issues. Some of the events that I attended, most recently included the City of Redmond's Quarterly Business Meeting, that was our kind of kickoff with the business community for the World Cup. This room was absolutely packed, it was a ton of fun. Be sure, if you're able, to come out and join us at Redmond Town Center on Monday, June 23rd for the Club World Cup game. The festivities and fun start at 10:30, the match starts at noon, and the fun is expected to go all day until 4 o'clock. National Trails Day was a huge success, as well as a whole weekend of events hosted by our Parks and Recreation staff, including the Drag Bingo and the Pride Promenade at Feral McWhorter Park, which drew about 70 folks and was a ton of fun. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. I've got two items. I want to preface real quick the two items that I'm going to mention from the public testimony that we received earlier from Erin, and what she said was that, in exchange with the mayor, that we have a louder voice as elected officials, we have more power. I often don't think of my job as being powerful, but I was reminded tonight that we do, in fact, have power. And the reason I mention that is because the two items are about us as elected officials, as community leaders, speaking up for those who are vulnerable, who can't easily speak up for themselves. The first item is, in fact, I did meet with, or I did talk with Ms. Glenn about the teen center and what the city could do. I actually called her to find out if she had heard anything from our council leadership. I hadn't heard anything, and I was curious if there was any action taken on that. I did, in fact, urge two weeks ago that we should move quicker rather than later. I get what council members have said tonight, that we will be getting a study session in July, but that shouldn't stop us from moving forward with a subcommittee and forming a citizen group. The other is, I talked with a dance studio owner up on Union Hill, and she was very concerned that, about her clientele, which is up to 500 people, primarily from the Hispanic community, and they had invited the city, and I think the invitation went to the mayor's office, to come and speak at an event to reassure that community that what they're seeing with immigration and what they're seeing with deportations, that we have a strategy here in Redmond, that we have a value system that we're going to begin to implement ideas and strategies to help facilitate defense and protections for that very vulnerable community. I assured her that, in all likelihood, that the invitations didn't go ignored, they may not have been well-understood, which brings me to my point. We need to reach out and understand. I followed up with our local Centro Cultural Mexicano new executive director, and had a very good meeting this morning for about an hour, also expressing concern that the city has a lot of influence and a lot of power to reassure the community, help the community, and begin to lay the groundwork for protections for our immigrant community. I think this is one of the most important things that we can do at this time. And I urge the council and council leadership to take action, both on the teen center, forming the committee, and also actions to take on forming a potential subcommittee for our immigrant community and organizing that as well. So, that's it.
Councilmember Fields? I do not recall seeing that email, so if you could forward it, that would be great.
I never saw the email, it was word of mouth, but I'm happy to...
The dance studio, to...
Yes.
Okay.
I talked with the owner.
Okay.
And I'm happy to put you in touch with her.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
I think that would be really...
I did not get that, so, that would be great.
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Council president?
Thank you. And I would also be interested to get the contact info for that, for the dance studio owner, because I had also not heard about that event. And I will just note, we did get a request emailed to us from... And I will just note, we did get a request emailed to us from the executive director at Centro Cultural Mexicano for us to do a convening for our community-based organizations that serve our immigrant communities in Redmond. And I touched base with Council Vice President Forsyth and the mayor on this today, and if the rest of the council is amenable, we'd love to schedule that as soon as possible. And the mayor has offered to have the staff help with organizing that. We heard from Centro Culturale that they would be happy to host it in their space, and I think we'll want to just be able to connect with them and the rest of our community-based organizations to see where would kind of be the most comfortable space for that, as well as, kind of, what's the best way for us to organize that? Likely, maybe not a full quorum of council members, so that way, it doesn't have to be a big televised event. People can feel a little more comfortable, but we'll, we'll try to figure out how to do that. Mayor Bernie, did you have any other thoughts you wanted to share on that? I just wanted to note that we want to follow up for sure.
Yeah, I'm hap, we're happy to follow up. I will share that because of the really challenging times we're in right now, we'll need to think carefully about what kind of meeting it is, because we would want to ensure the safety of our community members, and we would also want to ensure that, that they feel free to share with us what the concerns that are really going on. So, more to come on that, but it, we'll try to tread carefully with that to ensure that they feel as safe and secure as they need to be.
Thank you. And I just want to share, you know, I think last time that I heard, 48% of people in Redmond were born outside the U.S. That's a huge immigrant community that, that we serve, and we take that responsibility really seriously, or at least I will speak for myself. I take that really seriously and recognizing that this is a moment in which many in our community may be feeling vulnerable, and that we can find ways to support them, I think, is, is really important. So, we'll, we'll be following up on that. And I'll also note, just in, in terms of a couple other items, one is, I stopped, I stopped by the, by RYPAC's meeting this last week and was able to connect with some of those youth leaders there, both to tell them about our upcoming study session and, and the info on kind of how we'll be addressing on teen center, teen services, and also to invite them to come join us at our table at Derby Days. So, hoping that we'll have a bunch of RYPAC leaders there as well, and hope the community will come and chat with us. We'll be taking shifts, sitting on the, on the city hall front porch. I'll also note, since it was brought up about recology, that on that front porch, you're going to see, there's a table from, of recology, so you'll be able to get information on that. We're looking at the layout today, council leadership with, with our legislative coordinator. And we'll also have various tables for groups, including our Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission, our Senior Advisory Committee, our Planning Commission, and I think Arts and Culture Commission, I can't remember about that one. But anyway, those who aren't, don't have a specific table, will be invited to also join us at our table, but we're being one big kind of circle on the front porch, so people can come, connect not only with the council, but also a lot of our commissioners and those who, whose job it is to be that additional connection into community and connect back with council on that. So, and I also talked with RYPAC. I noted that I've talked with the mayor, along with the council vice president, about hopefully creating soon the opportunity for us to have a joint meeting with RYPAC, since we have joint meetings with our other commissions, but we haven't had that in a long time. So, especially given the current issues, it'd be great to be able to have them there. And then, also, we'll just note, since it was brought up, I think, I would concur, I think, once we get the information on July 22nd, we'll have a better sense and we can kind of build out the community group. But I have also talked with Mayor Bernie about the kind of next steps in ensuring that we do build out a stakeholder group, since it sounds like that that's been of consensus from the council, is that we saw some really great process the last time, when we had to deal with a situation like this, which was our Redmond Senior Community Center, to be able to get a really large number of stakeholders. I think there were like 70 people in that group that weighed in on the development of, of how that project progressed. So, however this moves forward, I just want to reiterate, like all meetings, and as I've been trying to share as well with community members, that I really do think this needs to be teen-centered and teen-driven, however, based on the information we get, we, we move forward. So, so that's, that's my commitment tonight, and what, and just continue to be able to look forward to engage with community on this. And then, I think that, that was all. I have other things for committee reports. Thanks.
Ombuds, Council Vice President?
Thank you. I think my colleagues covered a lot of what I had to cover. So, the conversation with Centro Culturale and getting that meeting scheduled, look forward to working on that together. And the conversation about the subcommittee for the teen center, there, yes, there is no news yet, but I agree that we want to make sure that we're doing it in the right process, and we need to get more information to make sure we know what that subcommittee is going to be tasked with doing, so we know who has the capacity to do that. But I very much look forward to getting that stood up as quickly as possible. The other thing I have to report on tonight is, I was alerted this afternoon to a thread on Reddit that said that ICE was in Redmond, and I noticed that it was very close to my home, so I jumped in the car and went to that apartment complex to, even though I knew it was a bit, the likelihood of them still being in the area was not high, I still went to that facility and spoke with the leasing office, and they were, in fact, at that property. They do not believe that they were able to find, locate the person. They may have been at work. But I was able to give the leasing office some good tools and information, places to check for resources, suggestions on what to look for. They had a lot of questions, and I was able to guide them to a couple of different websites, including our own, and point them to those things. And I would just say that if you are in a situation, make sure that you see a warrant that is actually signed by a judge and has the particular name of the person that they are looking for, because there are a lot of instances where that is not happening, where it is not actually signed by a judge. So, that was one of the big things that I was able to share with them, as well as pointing them to some resources.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm going to have our chief chat a little bit about that. I saw some of that social media posting as well, and so I wanted to make sure we were as clear about what was going on in our community as we could, so I called the chief. Could you share with us what you found out today? Thank you. Oh, hang on. There you go.
So, when we checked social media today, we did not see a lot of information in regards to it. I had a conversation with another federal law enforcement representative last week at a meeting. Unfortunately, the, in this new administration, the protocol that is normally followed, where a law enforcement agency will notify another agency when they have an operation in their jurisdiction, is no longer occurring. So, unfortunately, I don't know that we will be notified if ICE does, in fact, conduct operations in Redmond, other than by way of, you know, social media or the community reaching out. So, with that, to your point, warrants should be signed by a judge. That kind of pertains to entry into a person's residence. That's different if a person is, is out in public, as we have stated, and you direct them to our website. We do not cooperate with immigration enforcement activities from a police perspective. If they are, if our community has questions about the validity of individuals appearing to be law enforcement, they can call us. We can verify that, but we cannot intervene in that, you know, federal action. They, they do have the legal authority to conduct their operations and investigations, you know, in this community and others, but we can at least help verify that they are, in fact, federal agents conducting federal business, you know, for our community.
And I guess I'll ask you, chief, did you find any, were you able to track down if any of this activity is happening in our city today?
We were not. We were not able to verify that that activity was occurring. If you did speak with the leasing office, then I can talk to you offline and, and kind of follow up with them to get some additional information, but when we checked, we did not, you know, we were not able to confirm that activity.
Great. Thank you, sir. Council Vice President, and then I'll go to you.
I just wanted to clarify that this happened at a, at a location that has Redmond in the name but is technically in Bellevue, just to be clear.
Yes, that was, when, as we found out, there are a number of apartment complexes that have Redmond and Park in their name and, and location, but that location that we were provided with was, in fact, in Bellevue.
Councilmember Fields?
Chief, if I can, so, one of the biggest impacts or fallouts from what we're talking about is fear. People who have, in, in the previous five minutes, we were talking about the specifics and, and the, the legal limits, et cetera, et cetera. But there is a broader impact that's affecting thousands of people, and that is fear, even those who have legal documentation, green cards for years, children here, children in school, jobs. They all feel that the law could change abruptly against them. And I guess the, from a city perspective, and I'm asking you from a law enforcement perspective, is, is there a role for you as police chief to help council and help the mayor's office meet with some of these communities that are organized and, and feel this concern? And I know a lot of people. I have a very close friend that was stuck in a country for two or three months, and she is perfectly legal, and it wasn't until I was able to solicit the help of a U.S. senator to get her home. So, there, there is a lot of things happening that everyone seems to talk about to their friends and neighbors that is spreading this fear, and that changes your lives. You do not have the pursuit of happiness once you feel that kind of fear. So, is there anything, and, and I don't expect you to answer it tonight, but I would like to know, as we move forward with what council leadership has talked about, is there a role for you or your department in that as well?
Yes, I'm more than happy, and I have met with a number of members from our minority community to answer their questions and, and provide, you know, similar guidance in the sense of what it is we can and cannot do from a local, you know, law enforcement perspective. So, I'm more than happy to partner with the mayor's office and with council with whatever outreach or community conversations that are necessary.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for that update, chief. I think, since it was mentioned that actually that particular instance ended up outside of our borders, can you clarify, just for the listening public, part of the restriction on cooperating with ICE is based on a state law, correct?
Yes. So, Keep Washington Working Act is a state law that precludes local law enforcement from cooperating with federal law enforcement agencies as it relates to immigration enforcement activities. And then, just at our local level, our local policy also, in previous to the Keep Washington Working Act, did not allow us to participate in those activities.
Great. Thank you. So, to reiterate, we, we have both legislation here at the local level, but also for those who are in neighboring jurisdictions or going into neighboring jurisdictions, know that there is the Keep Washington Working Act, which, which covers those, those other areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate it. I definitely want to ensure that our community feels safe here, and, and so thanks for doing that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next, our last item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports? We'll start at the end. Councilmember Stewart?
Excuse me, thank you. I attended the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Federal Action Committee. We are gearing up for updates to the, the chapters related to this topic, and also, obviously, monitoring very closely what Congress is doing and what the impact is going to be there. At the Growth Management Planning Board, we continue to certify more comprehensive plans. We have now certified about 45 plans and have 40-ish to go. We did, for the first time, move forward with advancing two conditional certifications. The jurisdictions that we recommended conditional certification were Renton and Lake Forest Park. Both jurisdictions are already working to come up to compliance by the end of the year in order to, to move along with that and make sure that they're eligible for federal transportation dollars. I also attended the Affordable Housing Committee, which is a subcommittee or advisory committee of the Growth Management Planning Council. I am not a member of the AHC, but I do chair the SCA, the Sound Cities Association Caucus for the Growth Management Planning Council. Our meeting was canceled in June, but the Affordable Housing Committee met and had a really big meeting, and their work is going to impact our work for the rest of the year. That includes their final adoption of the updates to their charter. At the Affordable Housing Committee, there's been a long, ongoing conversation about the scope of that committee, and the big decision is that it will continue to serve under the Growth Management Planning Council at King County because GMPC is primary authority, because of the primary authority that it has for land use and the power that lies in that for countywide planning policies. The other piece of that committee that was just really informative was the evaluation of the housing-focused draft comp plan review program. Redmond was mentioned no less than 18 times in this meeting, because Redmond's staff are absolutely wonderful, and Redmond was the first municipality to, to present their housing, our housing chapter, and then the committee went through and, and continued to evaluate all of the housing chapters that were submitted. In the end, 35 out of 40 jurisdictions participated, representing about 98% of the King County population. There was a lot of evaluation as to whether this, how successful was this part of the process and what we can do about that in the future, and a lot of note-taking and notation, because we won't get to do this again for another generation, so trying to leave really strong breadcrumbs for ourselves in the future. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge one thing, it is not our own planning staff that are the only ones out of breath. That is the phrase that was used throughout the evaluation of this process. Jurisdictional staff are out of breath. That was the quote from King County. For example, while we were all working on our comprehensive plans, the countywide planning policies changed twice, and the legislature adopted 40 housing-related bills, many of which we are still working to implement. So, there, I thought the conversation was very thoughtful and a good reckoning of needing to give not just our current planning staff, but the planning profession, a little bit of space right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Thank you. On Friday, I co-chaired the East Trail Summit from, I think it was like 8 o'clock in the morning until about noon, and we had, I want to say, approximately 150 people come together and talk about the future of the East Trail, and it was quite fantastic. We had breakout sessions, and everybody had different sections that they worked on, and I look forward to sharing the results of that work and that community coming together and bringing their bold, fresh ideas for what the East Trail can be. I know there's a new video, that as soon as that gets shared out, I will share with you all, because it was really exciting, but it was really just my honor to be able to open up and close that event and be in community and talk about the future of what that trail could be, and I am very pleased to say that we are the first section that has our section paved, and that is the future that everyone wants to see for the entire East Trail, all the way from Renton all the way up through Snowhomish. So, it was a great afternoon, and just looking forward to sharing the results with you all soon.
Thanks for sharing that, and we are actually the only jurisdiction that has paid for our own as well and paved the whole thing. So, yeah, we are way, way above, way beyond everyone else. Councilmember Slough Dean?
Thank you. Earlier today, we had the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, which I chaired. We had two agenda items, the Alternative Crisis Response Update from our police department, in which we are looking at alternative crisis response, specifically tied to 988 in the City of Redmond, so we will continue to work on that through our subcommittee. We also got an update on a regional fire authority study from our fire department, potentially looking at that option with local jurisdictions. I also had the opportunity to attend the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee as an alternate in lieu of Councilmember Stewart's position on that, on that board, and we got a few updates, one on regional boards and committees, another on House Bill 2015, which is two potential revenue options for local jurisdictions. One is a law enforcement grant program and a local criminal justice sales tax option, so talk through that across other jurisdictions and their priorities. And then, the King County Council proposed a transportation district sales tax, which was discussed, specifically a 10-year, 0.1% sales and use tax for transportation improvement. was discussed, specifically a 10-year 0.1% sales and use tax for transportation improvements. So that will be continuing on in terms of discussion from that county level on what is being done. And then finally, after all of that discussion, we discussed potential or upcoming levies and ballot measures, of which there are a few of note. Parks levy at King County, EMS levy, Evergreen Health levy, lid lift, Lake Washington School District measures, mid-sales tax renewal, and more. So just things to keep in mind as we are working with our local jurisdictions nearby.
Great, thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I will follow up on Councilmember Salahuddin's update on PIC to note that I attended the Sound Cities Association Deputy Mayors and Council Presidents' discussion, and the main topic was around discussing some of the proposed changes to improve PIC or get some additional kind of structure on that, and hearing some feedback from that, as well as continued discussion about the levies and proposed kind of, you know, how SEA overall can approach more engagement with the county on planning for levies and kind of coordinating with cities. So it was interesting to be able to hear some of the discussion there from some of the other leaders, and I think it echoed maybe some of the discussion that went on in PIC as well. I also attended, I also attended a workshop that was led by the city of Bellevue and the Department of Commerce, or was hosted by the city of Bellevue, and it featured the Department of Commerce for cities to talk about transfer of development rights as a tool. This was also following up. I got that invitation after I had joined our planning director and some of our planning staff to meet with some folks at King County, just about that set of tools. And it was really interesting at this workshop. It was more for cities to learn more about how certain cities have been using that tool to both protect open and green space while also adding development and density where we want to add that. So it was really interesting to hear that, and I'll be making sure to share the notes with council, as well as with our planning staff, and to be able to, especially because some of our neighboring jurisdictions have used this tool, so they use some examples there, once I get the slides from them on that. And also, I wanted to note that our Subcommittee on Tenant Protections has continued to meet, and we got an update from the staff after the legislative session, and we were planning to bring back this month a proposal for discussion. Director Helen is out, and we want to wait until Director Helen is back to be able to work on this, but we do have some proposals to bring forward, and we'll bring those, we'll let, give the council more detailed updates on that. Council Vice President Forsyth and I were also connected by a community member with some lawyers at the Housing Justice Project, and we met with that community member and those lawyers, just to be able to ask some questions with additional Housing Justice Project attorneys, and want to thank them for their time, for giving us some of their analysis, and we'll share that back as well with Councilmember Fields, our other subcommittee member, but we just had that opportunity, so we jumped at it this week, and it was helpful for continuing, I think, to hone the recommendations that we'll be coming back to council with this fall. And then, also, we'll note that I joined National Trails Day and helped to build some trails with some of our Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commissioners. That was super fun, also bringing about my kiddos along to be able to do that, and thanks to all the community members that came out. We were at Hartman Park, and it looked good as new. So go and check out those newly laid trails, they look great over there, and thanks to everyone who pitched in. And then lastly, we hosted the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting, which brings together all of our eastside cities once a month to talk about transportation, and we hosted it here in the city of Redmond this last Friday. Councilmember Salahuddin joined along with myself to represent Redmond, and it was a really wonderful meeting. We had, we were joined by Congresswoman Susan Del Bennett's community liaison, Bailey White, who joined and gave us some updates from the Congresswoman. And then also, we just had a really great discussion about what the different cities are working on, and in particular, what some of the needs are and how, in particular, some of the federal funding and programs are really important to what we're working on. So that was a great discussion. And I'll also note that, oh, I'm just missing this, we also got an update from WashDOT on their state virtual coordination center, which I'll just flag, I think, is really interesting, so that in terms of our planning for the World Cup. So basically, after a series of things that basically shut down our highways for entire days due to different traffic incidents, they realized, WashDOT realized that you really needed to have more coordination between all of the different kind of local emergency agencies and WashDOT when a big incident happens. And so they've been doing a lot of planning and then also creating some more tools for communication, and I think this is, and they're in particular really preparing this so that they can be ready as we have some of these bigger events like World Cup coming up. So anyway, that was a really interesting piece of information, and I'll send along some information on that to the council.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to share a couple of things. One, I, the reason I missed the business meeting last time was because I was in Washington, D.C., with a group called Mayors and CEOs for Housing, and we were meeting with different congresspeople on Capitol Hill, both Democratic and Republican, working on some really important housing legislation that we're hoping either they will continue with or hopefully not cut too much funding. So we were working on that, and we will continue, we'll meet again this week at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, but one of the areas that looks like it's promising is they, it looks like they most likely will expand low-income housing tax credit, which is called LITC, which is extremely important for many of our affordable housing programs. The area that we're still extremely concerned with is our voucher program, and so we'll continue to do some work on that, trying to put a voice to why those are so important to keep people housed and keep housing financially feasible for the builders as well. So that was one thing. And then the other thing I wanted to share is that we have the Puget Sound Regional Council, and they were hosts to all of the national regional councils last week, and I was able to go and, on a panel, and talk about housing that Redmond has done, yay Redmond, and talk about all the great things that we've done, including transit-oriented development and the affordability that we're working on, and it was, it ended up being a wonderful conversation, and I was really pleased to be able to share that with the other regional councils in the nation. So also very fun, but I just feel really proud that we can share all the great work Redmond's doing. So thank you all for all of that, and including our comprehensive plan today. So it was great. Any other committee reports this evening? All right, seeing none, there's no unfinished business, there's no new business, and that concludes our business items for this meeting. If there's no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all.